Ten, two thousand twenty-three, at six oh one P M. We'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rawling.
Bob Jarvis.
Oh, sorry.
Bob Jarvis.
Ryan Harris.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Under the agenda, we need to add the naming of the land acquisition project. And. You want to do that? Leonard's going to be here anyway. Where do you want to put it? You want to put it right after the update from the town official? Ten A. Okay. Public comment, approval of minutes of July twenty-seventh and August third. Warrants, correspondence, we can take off excess weight permits, we don't have any. Updates from town officials. All the land acquisition naming will go in ten A. Announcement signing of the Pownell Historical Society lease agreement. Townwide reappraisal discussion, RFP approval. RFP updated policy, animal control ordinance discussion, public comment, executive for animal control, executive for legal, executive personnel, public comment, and agenda.
So moved with the changes.
Second.
Excuse me, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Ah, okay, public comment. Can you come up to the, introduce yourself, please? I know who you are, but.
Stan Anderson.
Whatever your pleasure.
Whatever.
I have some official talking points.
It's perfect.
Um, my name is Kate McRandle, and I am the, um, delegate for the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. It's a very ridiculous name, but at any rate.
Yep.
Um, I'm here to give you a really brief update on what's been going on with the internet, um, build out in Pownell. I had, want to apologize to the board for being kind of, uh, incommunicado, shall we say, uh, for quite a while. I think probably some of you know I've got a family tragedy, and, um, so I've been unavailable, to say the least. Anyhow, let me just start by saying the Communications Union District was formed in two thousand twenty. The whole idea behind it was to get internet service to under, to under, um, underserved and not served households and, and businesses in all throughout Southern Vermont. So last year, when I say underserved, I should say, the government, the US government says to be underserved, it has to be underneath, your, your internet service has to be below twenty-five megabits per second. Now, I live on Skippery Road, I get ten, so, and that's pretty common in Pownell. So we're, uh, definitely underserved in this community. But in any case, um, last year, the Vermont C U D, the, the, what, Southern Vermont one, was awarded nine million in Internet Fiber Construction Grant, which was quite remarkable. And they got it from the community, if you're interested in the Vermont Community Broadband Board. That along with three point three million from Consolidated, Consolidated Communications, um, they're adding that to it. So that covers about six thousand four hundred and twelve addresses. And, um, they're investing Consolidated decided beyond that to invest an additional ten point two million, to build an additional thirteen thousand, build out it for an additional thirteen thousand addresses. Anyhow, it brings it up to nineteen thousand, which is a considerable amount. So in partnership with Consolidated, which for some of you is known as Phidium Fiber, that goes under the umbrella of, of Consolidated.
Yep.
So that's a true, you're seeing Phidium that. But they're building, operating, and maintaining this network, and they expect to serve, to actually get fiber optic to all these underserved and unserved addresses this year, which is exciting. So far, uh, the question is, so, so what's happening in Pownell? You know, what are we doing now? That's why I'm here. So far, there's, they, they've divided this all into phases. Phase one, um, they actually completed on schedule last year. And phase one was a build out of this high-speed service in Bennington, Woodford, most of Shasberry, and Glastonbury. In phase two, which we're now in, uh, that includes Dorset, Land Row, Londonary, Manchester, Peru, Pownell, thank God, Rupert, and Sandgate. So as of yesterday, we had a board meeting yesterday, and as of yesterday, they said they've reached about ninety-nine percent of the whole county. And they said work began on July twenty-fourth in Pownell. And so far, they've laid three point six two miles of, of fiber, which is kind of exciting. But the question, I guess, is also when it's going to be finished, and when are we going to get this? They say that they're expecting to finish in the next few months, certainly by November, that's what we're being told.
That's nice.
So that's good. If you have any questions about this, you can go to the C U D website. That's at S O V T C U D dot net. And that gives you a really, that will give you build out schedules, maps, et cetera. Or you can go right to Fiber, so Phidium Fiber themselves. If you want to sign up, you know, ahead of time, that's a good thing to do. So just, it's really easy, you just go to Phidium Fiber, basically put your address in and your name and your, um, so. There's also a phase three. Phase three is the last group of, group of residences. There's, there are seventeen of the entire county that are not in that, you know, that are really hard to reach. Of those, there are three of them in Pownell. We're trying to kind of put names to these addresses, and we're trying to figure, you know, get in touch with these people. One of them is one thousand Henderson Road. I think it's a Steve Bon Giovanni, does that ring a bell with anybody? Oh, okay, great, and does that seem reasonable that he's unserved or underserved? Okay, well, we'll get to him then.
Up in the streets.
I'm, I'm going to try to maybe, I'm.
You can reach back out when I can help you with.
Get his, get his number. Two are two White Oaks Road and, um, eighty-five White Oaks Road. And I'm kind of, I think that's down by Williams Town, isn't it?
Yeah, if you go to Williams Town.
You have to come into Williams Town.
Yeah.
Does that make sense that they're out in Williams Town?
Yeah, back here.
Okay, all right, well, they're going to try to reach them. So hopefully, the, I'll do.
Great.
Maybe I'll get the.
Their phone numbers, Ricky?
Yeah, Ricky and Katie.
I may not have phone numbers, but.
Okay, we thought, we were thinking of sending them letters, the idea of going up to their house.
No, yeah, I shouldn't give you addresses, definitely.
Good. So that's really basically what it is, we're the first C U D in the whole state to get this.
Nice.
Everyone, I don't know if you've noticed the press coverage, Senator Welch was, you know, going on about it up in Manchester the other day. We are apparently getting a plaque for this, which, uh, you want with. And the other thing I wanted to say was, just in case you think, oh my God, this is going to be another tax rise, the C U D doesn't get any money from taxes, it's prevented by law, they're not allowed to. They get it from the grants and donations, so that's the good news on that.
Nice.
So we're, you know, we're, we're ahead of schedule and we're doing well.
And, and I'm sure that everyone who, um, has driven or drives around Pownell since July twenty-fourth or whenever they started, they see the, the crews are working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All over town.
Well, Tara did mention to me that there's been a little bit of a, you know, that there's kind of a problem, people have complained about the work on the roads. But if that's the case, please let me know, I can get hold of, I can talk to my, the, the, the C U D board.
Okay.
And they'll just talk to, to, to Consolidated.
Yeah, and our road foreman did reach out to, um, Consolidated and.
Okay, good.
Got certificate of insurance and things, so that's, yeah, we're in a better place now, I think.
Just give me a call.
Okay.
That's, that's good information, actually, because.
That is.
Did our road foreman had a little concern last week and.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay, we just, we.
Been kind of out of it, and I apologize for that.
No, it was, um, I put to have you, to have you as that contact person, we'll, we'll put you on the file for that, and then.
Well, it's a big, a big win for the.
No, it is.
I had to have one for the town.
Thank you for all your hard work on that, to be honest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm moving out just here.
Okay.
Go right out there, go right out.
Did you have any questions for?
Yeah, that's right, any questions?
No, perfect.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Uh, we're trying to resident Pownell. Uh, I'm very pleased with to see the work that's going on on Route seven, which has, uh, been long overdue with drainage and widening of the shoulders, et cetera. But I did notice our town trucks there. Our town trucks are, uh, involved with this, and if so, are we being compensated for that?
Well, we do that or what?
Do you want me to, do you want to handle it, yeah?
The, um. They, they approached the town, our road foreman, for the project, to see if we could take a system, pull away the grindings and set up a storage area. Some of them are going to be used for reuse and relaying, and others that they don't utilize, we can use for our roads.
So is that how we benefit from a dumpster? We're still paying our man and using our truck?
But we're getting material for free.
Getting material for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is, which is going to be mixed in with our gravel.
Okay.
Um, our processed gravel for top coating roads. So it should extend our, if we have five thousand yards of gravel, and I'm being hypothetical here, which I don't know what. I think, I think the bid was for like five thousand yards this year, but at any rate, if we have about five thousand stockpiled, or we plan on, you know, we're going to mix that in. And, um, we get an extension of our own processed gravel for, for the roads for.
Yeah, I just, you know, all of a sudden I see the Pownell trucks there, and I'm like.
Well, I think.
Isn't this a state project, you know?
So, so I think, I think a couple of things have changed, um. And I really, I really think it's for the better, to be honest.
Oh, it have to town benefits, so, yeah, that's a great thing.
I, I think a couple of things that I really think have changed in, um, in, in, from the past, and it, and it's just kind of changing, is the state does include towns in their projects now. It's not just the state's coming in and they're going to do this. Now, the, the communication between our road foreman and, and the state engineers and, and, um, I think that line of communication has really grown extensively over the last few years. And in, in a positive way.
Yeah.
You know, we, we get a lot of, you know, we get a lot of input from the state on a lot of things where we don't have to pay an engineer to come in and do things, just different projects, because the road, so, so just a little background, the board, we divided up all these different entities, and the road crew, road foreman, wastewater, they're on my plate. So I work really close with Joel on a lot of these projects, so we talk multiple times on different things that are going on.
Well, as long as it, yeah, it's the town, that's, that was my only question.
I have, um, Joel's email response to Tim Poses, if I can share that now.
Yep.
Um, so Jim Poses, at our last meeting, asked a similar question, what was happening with the millings. So Joel's response to him was, uh, hi Jim, I've been told that you had questions, um, we're getting them from the state. We're planning on mixing them with the gr- the gravel to bind it better. Also, the edges of the blacktop roads where they keep washing out, we use some of that, um, to keep that from happening. Most towns have a lot of blacktop roads, and they keep their own millings, and they mix it with the gravel, and it works really well. In the past, along with other towns across the state, we have tried R A S, which is a recycled asphalt shingles, which if we had to buy them, was eighteen dollars per ton, not very cost effective. Layered on the dirt and mixed with the gravel as an experiment with the state. We found it held the roads better, and it cut the dust down, so we didn't have to lot, add a lot of dust treatment, which is also costly to the town. Uh, with a darker color, it thawed out quicker, um, than other parts of the road. And with gravel at ten dollars a yard out of our own pit, mag chloride at a dollar oh nine a gallon for dust control, and the cost of sand and road maintenance in general, this is a huge savings for the town.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
For the question, Rich. Any more public comment? Nothing? Okay. Approval of minutes, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, questions? All of them favored?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, minutes of August third, two thousand twenty-three, special select board meeting.
I could see them.
So moved.
Then save it for the next meeting.
That was roomy and.
Did I not read it? Was it under Julie or was it under Tara's?
I was in room minutes.
I didn't see them, so I'm going to.
Special for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The special, wasn't that the sewer commission?
Yes, that was last Monday.
It was what?
Or last.
Last Thursday.
Thursday.
It was the sewer commission.
Yes.
Just put it off till next meeting, we'll just approve it at the next one.
I didn't see them.
Okay.
And I can't vote on it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's fine, I, I, oh, it's fine.
It's literally just a, it's on the list.
Um, till the meeting of the twenty-fourth, please. Uh, warrants, counts payable, August fourth, thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Counts payable, new town hall, August fifth, uh, eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Counts payable, August eleventh, thirty-four thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Payable, August fourth, eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, same. Payable, August eleventh, eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and nine, or seventy-nine cents, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Any correspondence, Tara?
Yep, uh, just one from Elena Bandanza, hopefully I didn't butcher that name. Um, and she is from Native Plant Trust. Hello, Tara, my name is Elena, and I'm writing on behalf of Native Plant Trust. We are nonprofit plant conservation organization that partners with the Vermont National Heritage Program to monitor populations of native plants throughout the state. We are interested in conducting a survey for a population of native plants located on the nature conservancy property behind the ball field, listed as being owned by Pownell Wastewater Treatment Facility. The most direct route for our volunteers to accept, access the plant population of interest is to cross the ball field on Route feet forty-six, and then walk into the woods behind, partly owned by T N C. Um, having reached out to Darcy, she sent the email to you, they're just looking for permission to cross the property and access those plants.
What's the board's favor?
I see a lot of them.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, I just want to make sure that, uh, it was permission to cross the property. Um, but they're not asking for permission to access the property on the other side, they're just asking for permission. I'm assuming they already have permission for the property. They're only access, they only want access to, across the ball field.
Yep.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Updates from town officials. Uh, I guess that's.
I have one too, that's, I also have one after your time.
Help officer, um, has been extremely busy. They did four inspections, um, hunts and runs with units, um, a couple weeks ago. Remember if I talked about that last time, I can't remember, but, uh, also went with our constable on, uh, service, over the weekend. We did, um, working in pairs has been, um, pretty effective, I think, you know. Had a lot of exposure in a couple of different places, and went with Leonard Colling, I'm not sure if that was the help officer select board, I don't know what it was, I went with him on a Sunday. Another set of eyes, went with him on a Sunday, um, to a dog situation, I guess I was the guy who answered the phone, so. The one who had to go with him. But there again, working in pairs has been, um, very, very effective. Uh, I think it was that day, for sure. I've had, I've, I've had some people reach out to me with health complaints. But until I get a complaint, either via email or in writing, I don't act on those complaints, and that's what I tell people. Yeah, I do have, I do have two inspections to go do, um, in the next week or so, when you're scheduled. We have to give people notice and, on my, you know. Um, but I, I won't act on a health complaint, um, over the phone. Or, or whatever, it needs to be, uh, either a written, formal complaint signed, an email with, with a signature on the email or whatever, and then, and then I will act on it, I just want to get that out there. I know some people are frustrated with me, some people have called me for, um, different things, dumpster parked too close to their property, that, that's, when you rent, and whatever, that's, I don't know what you get, I, there's nothing I can do about that kind of stuff, so. Zoning, same thing. I did, I went down to the, um, celebration two Saturdays ago. I spoke in length with the, um, lady from Dean Snowshoes, and the guys that are renting for the motorcycle shop. Put a name to her face, we've talked a bunch on the phone with both of them, I just have never met them. They're excited about being here, um, they both have a lot of plans, so I did go up to them as the zoning administrator, and they, they have some plans moving forward with some things. We got a bunch of permits out, and I worked on a couple today, actually, with Hannah, so. It's kind of hit really much so for me.
I have a report from Joel, our highway department foreman. Uh, good afternoon, just a quick update of what the road department is doing. As posted, um, online, Mount Anthony Road is going to be closed from Mon- Monday, August fourteenth, for approximately three weeks, for the replacement of the existing covert to a new box covert. Most of this is being done with grant money. We have concluded the hauling of millings and have a pretty good pile for further use. We have also, uh, the Furlong Road Bank Stabilization Project is almost done, hopefully this week. We are also working with Montgomery Road and Valley View, rebuilding manholes and replacing coverts in preparation for the pavement, which is scheduled for the first week in September. Also trying to get some of the roads back in shape after the heavy rains this summer. Darcy, Tara, myself, it's actually Hannah, um, is currently working on a new permit and rules for digging, um, in the town right of way. We had nothing in place previously to protect the town when outside contractors came, such as Phidium Fiber, um, installing new lines. We have found out the, some people are just kind of digging without letting us know, and obviously, we don't want that. We want a certificate of insurance to leave it. Uh, I thank the people for patience getting around this summer with all the roadwork going on between the state and the town. Hopefully, we should get back to normal by this fall. Thank you, and have a great rest of your summer.
Anything else?
No.
Um, naming the land acquisition project.
So I don't know if you want to name the project, name the whole land, once, once that purchase is complete, do you want to name the whole forest, or just that piece? Donald Campbell suggested something along the lines of Pownell Town Forest, or something like that, so.
Um, do we need to name it tonight, or can we give it a working name that's something other than, you know, the, what, what we've been calling it? And then, and then give it some thought, and maybe come back with a better name?
You could definitely give it a working name, which I would prefer definitely a working name tonight, because then we need to label the maps and stuff accordingly, like the subdivision maps and all of that.
Uh, so, so before we give it a real name, something on the order of the, uh, Pownell Forest Acquisition. It might be the, uh, it might be the working name until we come up with a permanent one. Or something.
Uh, for connector.
Cause we're also going to need to, I don't know if we'll be renaming the road, or if it will just be like an extension of Dean Road, of that park, so that's a whole nother. I don't know if the naming of this land will affect what you're going to do as far as road name, or how any of that works.
You know, I, I would almost think, I would almost think that, that we would want two names, this is just me out of the seat of my pants right here. Because, because we already have the name on the forest, the seven hundred and fifty acres of, of the Strobridge, forest property or whatever it is. So maybe we, we take that three hundred and, whatever it is, three hundred acres, and we, we name that the Strobridge Extension. Just about, and, and like I said, it's coming from right now. And then we name the road, um, you know, Dean Road Extension, and then, uh, you know, Forest Connector, I don't know, just some, but I know, I know we need some working names.
Got to check with nine one one for that, right? As far as similarities and all that.
Yeah, we, we can't do that part of the process until later anyways, but, um, yeah, we just need the names.
Maybe we just name the project right now, the Strobridge Forest Connector, for a working name.
For a project name?
For, for a working name, I don't know, did you have an idea?
I don't, I don't.
I know you've been working, how about you, you got an idea, you've been working really hard on this one, you know?
No, no, it's, I, right now, it's a necklace, like, it was, it was, it was, it'll be confusing once somebody's ever looking for that or anything, just because that wouldn't be a name anymore, or something showing that it is the town of Pownell, so I thought it was Strobridge Park, I have a name for it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm just, I know you guys have worked really hard with, with me on this, so, that's why I'm asking your opinion.
Connector Access, I don't know.
You know, maybe we, you know.
The project, then connector.
It worked, I know you've been working with the maper pretty hard in the, in the survey, or if we named it the Strobridge, Connector, at this point, is that going to suffice what we need?
Yeah.
So, and then we can.
Yeah, cause they're going to change many of what they're calling the project instead of all right of way, it's going to be called like the, um, like, to be compared to town of Pownell.
Right, right.
Yeah.
We can name it, you know, for now, the Strobridge Forest Connector, I don't know, because that's what it's doing, basically.
Is that what you're going with, Forest, or Strobridge Forest?
Somewhere along those lines.
Strobridge Forest Access. If we don't have access to the rest of it, oh, right, really, until we get this other piece done.
If you say Stro- Strobridge Forest Access, it sounds like you're talking about the, the.
Just the road that goes in.
I would call it acquisition, if, if we're looking at working title, the Strobridge, uh, uh, Forest Connector Acquisition. For a working title, and then, uh, I guess, I, that's a little bit long.
Yeah, but that's, I don't.
Stro- Strobridge Forest Connector Access, you say that five times, yes.
Yeah. I was going to say, we could go with the Town and Pownell Forest Acquisition, but that's not a lot shorter, it's just a little easier to say.
It really doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to do.
Pick one. Somebody else pick it.
Over there.
Pick one, Andy.
Dean Road Forest.
Strobridge.
Strobridge Forest Acquisition, how's that?
Yeah.
No.
Just do, just do Strobridge Forest, Forest Acquisition, skip this part.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They don't need it, forty miles.
Okay.
That good?
That's good.
Thank you.
Everybody happy with that?
We'll change it later.
We're going to have to change it later, we just, we just need a name right now for, to finish up this project.
Poor Tara's like, I should have just picked something myself. Didn't want to.
Whicker than I thought.
Watch for me.
Okay, announcement and signing of the Pownell Historical Society Lease Agreement.
Here it is.
So I guess we can.
Final version. So I think we need to, I don't know if you want to do a brief announcement about the agreement?
Joyce, do you have somebody that wants to come up and sit with us? Excuse me. I just want to know if you want to come up on, with somebody from the Historical Society, you're, you're all here.
You can all, if you want.
Run up to the table and, and, do we want to? do we want to, do we want to read through this? What, what's the Historical Society? What is your pleasure? I guess I'm gonna ask you this, Jeremy, you're the.
Yeah.
Uh, would you like me to read through this entire lease agreement so that it's on record?
Um, that's gonna, that's gonna take a while, man.
I'm a pretty fast reader, but.
Yeah, well, might as well.
You know, we're pretty quick readers. If you can do that, mom.
So it's on public record.
It's on, it's on public record. I'm gonna read through this, um, lease agreement between the Town of Pownell and the Pownell Historical Society Incorporated. This lease agreement is made this tenth day of July, two thousand twenty-three, effective date, by and between the Town of Pownell, at Vermont Municipality Chartered in the State of Vermont and the Pownell Historical Society Incorporated. A Vermont not-for-profit corporation with a principal place of business in Pownell, Vermont, collectively referred to as parties. Reciters. Whereas the town owns the Town of Pownell New Town Hall Building and premises at five eleven Center Street, Pownell, Vermont. Of which part of the building is the eighteen twelve historic one-room schoolhouse number eight that has been relocated to the new building site. Whereas the donation of the schoolhouse building was made with the understanding Historical Society would have a continued location out of which to operate. Parties agree that the basement area beneath the historical schoolhouse will be used as the Historical Society's place of operations, said area being here and after referred to as leased facility. The area used by a lease to the Historical So- Society includes the basement room directly beneath the one-room schoolhouse, said basement area being approximately eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. Whereas the Historical Society is desirous leasing the leased facility for use as the Historical Society offices and the town is desirous of leasing said area to the Historical Society. Whereas the leased facility comprises an appropriate place for conducting the above referenced historical society business and now therefore in connection of the covenants here and after contained, the town and the Historical Society agree as follows. Agreement, section one, leased area and term. The area leased hereunder is approximately eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, consisting of the basement room directly beneath the one-room historic schoolhouse. The Historical Society shall have the use and enjoyment of common facilities of the Town Hall Building, including the entrance ways and hallways for access to said leased premises and to the bathrooms to which the Historical Society shall be entitled to utilize for its staff and customers. The initial term of this agreement shall be for five years from the effective date of July tenth, two thousand twenty-three. The term shall automatically be renewed for a term of ten years so long as the leasing is not in default of the terms of this lease. At the expiration of the first five-year term, the parties will renegotiate the rent. The town agrees that any rent increases shall be no greater than the inflation rate over the course of the initial five-year term as measured by the Consumer Price Index for the Northeast Region. Rent increases during the renewal term shall not exceed the CPI inflationary rate for the Northeast Region. Section two, payments to the town. The town shall lease the leased property, leased facility, excuse me, to the leasing, the Pownell Historical Society for the reduced rent of one thousand dollars per year payable on or before September first of each year during the initial five-year term. The town has declined the leasing offered to pay twenty-five thousand dollars towards the space and expresses the intent that the leasing use said funds toward paying the rent during the term of the lease. Utilities and security, section three. Heat and electricity shall be provided by the town. The town shall provide guest Wi-Fi internet access to leasing. But any additional internet access or bandwidth required by leasing shall be the responsibility of the leasing. The Historical Society will be responsible for contracting for its own telephone services and the town shall have no responsibility to lease or provide these services to the town. The installation of any security equipment in or around the leased facility, including cameras and monitoring hardware, or the installation of any special equipment necessary for the preservation of historical documents and pieces must be approved in advance by the town. In the event of such an approval, the Historical Society will be financially responsible for the purchase, installation and maintenance of its own equipment. The Historical Society shall provide adequate supervision and security for the leased facility. The Historical Society shall be responsible for all janitorial services for the leased premises excluding the common entrance ways and hallways. Section four, keys and other maintenance. The town shall retain keys to access to Historical Society's leased facilities for emergencies and the general purpose of maintenance of the town offices. The town shall give twenty-four hours notice to the Historical Society before entering their leased space for scheduled maintenance excluding cases of emergency. The Historical Society shall be responsible for maintenance and cleaning of the leased facility. The Historical Society shall be responsible for the general day-to-day upkeep of the leased facility. Section five, limitations upon use. The Historical Society shall comply with all federal, state, local laws, statutes, codes, ordinances, rules, regulations, policies and requirements regarding use of the leased facility. The party shall not use, permit or allow a leased facility or any portion of a leased facility to be used, occupied or improved under this agreement in any manner or for any purpose that is in any way violation of a law. The Historical Society shall not permit the consumption of alcohol, use of tobacco products or possession of weapons or firearms on the leased facility. If any license, permit or other governmental authorization is required for the lawful use of the leased facility, the Historical Society shall procure and maintain it to the extent required by law. The Historical Society shall be responsible for the safety of all persons and property when using the leased facility. All materials, equipment and supplies used in the leased facility shall conform to all applicable law. Termination. I'm sorry, it's also, you're right. I didn't, you should have said no. It's all right, I'll give it to you. Section six, we're almost done. Termination. In the event of a breach of this agreement, the non-breaching party may give the breaching party thirty days' written notice of the non-breaching party's intention to terminate this agreement. If the breach has been cured within the thirty-day period specified, the agreement shall terminate upon expiration of the thirty-day period. Termination pursuant to this section shall be in addition to any other remedies otherwise available by law. A choice not to terminate the agreement pursuant to this section shall not constitute a waiver of the non-breaching party's right to any other remedy for the breach or to terminate this agreement at a later date because of the same or indifferent material breach of this agreement. If the leased facility subject to this agreement is sold, destroyed, taken, maimed, inobeying or is otherwise disposed to the extent that the leased facility cannot be used with a purpose for which the party intended it to be used pursuant to this agreement, this agreement will terminate automatically and immediately with regard to that leased facility. The town shall notify the town. That's another question I have. The town shall notify the town in writing of such disposition as soon as the town becomes aware of the disposition or the possibility thereof. Damage to facility, repair to damage resulting from use. If the leased facility is damaged as a result of the Historical Society's use of the leased facility, whether caused by the Historical Society, its invitees or trespassers, the Historical Society shall be responsible for the repair of such damage to the facility and shall pay for the cost of repairing the damage. Facility damage beyond repair. If the leased facility is damaged beyond repair, this agreement shall terminate with respect to the leased facility at the option of the town. Repairs to other damage. If the leased facility is damaged but not as a result of the Historical Society's use of the leased facility by the itself, its invitees or trespassers, the town shall be responsible for the cost of repairing the damage and shall repair the facility as quickly as possible unless it is damaged beyond repair, in which case this agreement shall terminate with respect to that facility. Cleanup. The Historical Society shall be responsible for day-to-day cleanup of the leased facility and except for normal and customary wear and tear, shall leave the leased facility in the same condition at the end of the term of this agreement as the start of the term. The Historical Society shall not be permitted to store supplies on town property outside the leased facility unless otherwise, otherwise agreed to in writing by the parties. Capital improvements, no structures, improvements, alterations or facilities shall be constructed, erected, altered and made to the leased facility by the Historical Society without the prior written consent of the town, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. Insurance, Historical Society use of leased facility, the Historical Society shall maintain in full force throughout the termination agreement at its own expense, a policy of comprehensive liability insurance which will ensure the Historical So- Society and the town against liability for injury or death of persons and damage to the leased facility arising from the Historical Society's use of leased facilities under this agreement, policy shall be for not less than one million dollars per occurrence for any person injured or killed, not less than one million dollars for property damage and shall be maintained on an occurrence basis commensurate with existing liability policies. Almost done. The Historical Society shall provide the town with a copy of the policy, including an endorsement that states the policy shall not be reduced or canceled within ten business days written notice of the Historical Society and the town. The town shall be named as an additional insured and a certificate of insurance shall be provided to the town. Notice of alteration or termination, the Historical Society shall not alter or terminate their insurance pursuant to this provision without at least ten days, excuse me, prior notice to the town. Any altered or terminated insurance shall be replaced with insured, insurance meeting the requirements of this section. Uh, so that the one million dollar of the, of replacement insurance become effective no later than the termination or alteration of the prior insurance. Miscellaneous provisions, right of entry. The town may enter the leased facility at any time to determine whether the other party is complying with this agreement and will inspect or maintain the leased facility as required by law. The Historical Society waives any claim for damages for injury, inconvenience, interference with activities or any loss of occupancy or quiet enjoyment caused by such entry. Applicable law. This agreement shall be governed by and interpreted under the laws of the State of Vermont applicable to instruments, persons, transactions and subject matter which have legal contacts and relationships exclusively within the State of Vermont. Any action or proceeding seeking any relief under or with respect to this agreement shall be brought solely to the courts in the State of Vermont. Prevailing law, in the event of any conflict or ambiguity between the disagreement and Vermont or federal law or regulation, Vermont, federal law or regulation shall prevail. Severability. If any provision or any part of this agreement is for any reason to help be invalid and or unenforceable or contrary to public policy, law, statute or ordinance by a court of competent jurisdiction, including but not limited to reasons set forth in the preceding sentence, the remainder of this agreement shall not be affected here thereby and shall remain valid and fully enforceable. Assignment, neither party may assign or transfer any of its obligations, rights or duties under this agreement without the prior written consent of the other party. Any assignment or transfer made without such written consent shall be void and the option of a non-assigned party shall immediately terminate this agreement. Successors and assignments. The terms and provisions of this agreement shall extend to and be binding upon and inure to the benefit of the successors of the respective parties. Amendments, each of the parties acknowledges and agrees that this agreement may be amended only by a writing signed by all the parties. Entire agreement, this agreement and its exhibits constitute the entire agreement between the parties with respect to the subject matter here of no prior agreement, statement, promise or representation made by any party, employee, officer or agent which is not contained herein shall be binding or valid. Any previous agreements between the town, Historical Society regarding the facilities are hereby terminated. Any property or facilities that are not described in this agreement are not subject to this agreement. Headings, the headings of the sections are for convenience only and not a part of this agreement, nor shall they be considered in construing the intent of this agreement. Interpretation, the language of all parts of this agreement shall in all cases be construed as a whole according to its fair meaning and not in favor of nor against any of the parties as draftsmen or otherwise. Waiver, no waiver of default in any of the terms, covenants or conditions in this agreement shall be a waiver of any subsequent default same of the, or any other terms, covenants or conditions herein contained. Notices, all notices, certificates or other communications herein shall be deemed given when personally delivered or mailed by certified mail postage prepaid to the parties at the addresses set forth below. Execution by facsimile or in counterparts. This agreement may be executed in counterparts, each of which shall constitute an original of the agreement. Facsimile signature pages transmitted to other parties to this agreement shall be deemed equivalent to original signatures on counterparts. And last. Warrant of authority, each of the persons signing this agreement represents and warrants that such person has been duly authorized to sign this agreement on behalf of the party indicated and each of the parties by signing this agreement warrants and represents such party is legally authorized and entitled to enter into this agreement.
So, Mike, apparently I wish it was July and July and the whole lease agreement, so we're gonna trade. This is the one you should.
You have to read it all over again.
You go back, you go back to what I read and you edit that baby, okay?
Great job.
So, you know, can I just see the other one back for just one second? I had, I had a couple of question marks. I'm sure everybody else picked up on that.
He has a town.
The town, town, yeah.
I fixed it.
So it was on page.
She fixed it.
You did?
Yeah, I always pointed it out to me, I fixed it.
Okay, so it's directed in this one?
Yes.
Okay, there was two of them, right?
Two Julys and then one typo.
The typo on section three, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Right here in front of me, sorry. Okay. Okay, perfect. And then the other one was?
I don't know where the other one was.
Where did I see the other one?
Responsibly the town, to the town.
Right, there was two.
Yeah, something about the town, I'll give notice to the town.
Right. You made a question, I'll just have to do it.
I did it right here, but I don't know if I did that on the other one, Ange. I did it there. Did I do it on the other one?
I thought, I thought you'd do it. Got it in front of me, so I can find it.
I'm sorry, bear with me for a minute, I found I made a mark, but I guess I did.
It's on the second page, isn't it?
The first one was on the second page, Joyce, yeah, and that one's been corrected.
Yeah, so I did that one. That's the one that you showed me. I fixed that one.
But then I want another one. It's two dates and that, I remember three things.
Yeah.
He's got four.
I see.
Oh, that's one I marked, oh.
I apologize, everyone, I should have, I marked one. Why didn't I mark the second one? It's a matter of me.
Guess he's got to preach it again.
Right here, it's on, it's on the very top of, it's section six, it's on the termination. Um, it says, at the, um, very top line, second paragraph down, the town shall notify the town in writing of such disposition as soon as the town becomes aware.
That's what it's already.
Right there.
So, so PHS shall notify the town, is that what it should say?
I'm sorry, it took so long, I should have marked the second one, dude. I apologize.
Which way is, is this supposed to read? The PHS shall not, shall notify the town or the town shall notify PHS?
Termination. There's the lease.
I would think it'd be the town shall notify the PHS.
Yes, I think you should read the town shall notify the PHS.
Or PHS, I'm sorry, I said C.
Yeah.
The town should notify. Yes. Like I said, I've been up since midnight.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. A little quicker, because of the, I should have written down where it's marked.
Hey, so don't sign that one either, she's going to get your new one.
The signature page is gonna be fine. Right, the signature page is gonna be fine. We're just changing them.
Gotta change out that one.
Those other two things that we're changing now, that's all. So the signature page is gonna be fine. What's the board's pleasure?
So moved and silent.
Second, weather correction, yeah.
Any more discussion by the board? Any comment from, from the Historical Society?
When, when are we getting, getting keys?
Um.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. I'll probably get to one later, I don't know.
I got stuff in my car. Um, I did want to give the insurance binder to you all. There is all. There's the receipt and there's the insurance binder. And who do we make the checkout to, to bring it to?
The Town of Pownell.
The Town of Pownell, okay. Me?
Do we have any more, do we have any discussion from the board?
We wanted to ask them.
More comment from the Historical Society or anybody? Any comments? Questions?
I didn't hear, uh, we have twenty-four seven access to the space. It's not like.
It was in there.
Coming at three o'clock in the morning, but.
I'm pretty sure that was in there, wasn't it? Yeah.
What was that?
Yes.
Yeah, um, he asked if you have twenty-four seven access to the space. Yeah, it was a note that you could use at your, at your.
The town, the town office doesn't have to be open. The town, the town office doesn't have to be open.
On a separate security system too, so.
That's right, so weekends and.
Yeah.
Like it's weekends, whatever, absolutely.
But just be mindful if you make the alarm go off, she's the one that has to come with the. Well, we might be changing now, so one of you gets the call.
Just throw it on my plate.
Just be mindful.
One of them, if it's their space.
But we do have to set up passcode and all that stuff.
Gotcha, alright, so women do that to you, or the. I told you that tomorrow, I can keep the stuff in the car.
I wouldn't, um.
Just motion papers.
There's still, we're still have discussion, relax.
Can you repeat your motion, though?
I said that we should sign it with the changes that were fixed.
Did you change that, that the chair will sign it?
The chair will sign the agreement lease for the town historical society with the changes.
That's enough, thank you.
Okay, um, I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's worked pretty hard on this, it's been a long time getting out there and I think there was, there were some times when it wasn't so pleasant, but we knew we'd come to this agreement at some point, the end would be, th- this is the end that everybody was looking for. So, um, I just wanna thank everyone for, for the extremely hard work and, and the time and effort that's been put into this. And it's just another thing, I'll tear his plate.
Add to that, um, I would like to thank all those who were part of it that are no longer with us. They weren't here to see it come to completion, so, um, you know, frankly, I mean, I could go on all, all night long. When I was out collecting names for one of the many petitions, um, I visited a neighbor and I met her husband in the yard and he said she wasn't doing very well and I said, no, I don't wanna bother, he said, no, she would like to see you, so I went in and it was obvious that she was in grave condition. So, you know, she said, what's going on, and I explained to her, you know, about the schoolhouse and the history center and all, she said, you're gonna save the schoolhouse, and I said, yes, and she said, and you're gonna have a history center, and I said, yes, Eleanor, we're gonna save the school and we're gonna have a history center. She looked at her husband, she said, she said, give it to me, I'm gonna sign it, she said, and you sign it. Well, she didn't make it to see it happen, but every time we hit a bump in the road, that conversation went through my head, so I can say, hey Eleanor, we made it. And thank you all that, that, you know, past board members, all the, everybody that, that has been supportive, very supportive of us. Yes, we're glad that we're here and we've come to this point. And we're gonna have the best history center in the state of Vermont.
And thank you to the board and all its employees who also worked along with us, we certainly appreciate it and I don't think you'll be sorry.
Oh, I think we have a great, uh, uh, team approach going already, I think, that's our thing, we're, we're trying anyways.
Any more public comment or comment from the historical society or the board on this? Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second, all those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye, thank you. And on that historic note, you need to, I was down to Suzie, uh, Suzie Jones now, but I was down to Suzie Peckham's yesterday and.
Oh, I heard about you.
I was down there yesterday.
Picture that I want, no, just kidding.
I, I, I got a lot of treasures out of there yesterday, because I'm not gonna lie.
I know, I heard.
That's okay, as long as it's being protected, that's the important thing.
Well, today's the tenth, correct?
Correct.
August, yes, August tenth, I wish it was July tenth, to be honest with you, that's, that's why I.
Yeah, is this going to Jeremy?
Cause the president.
Jeremy's the president.
Is that all we can do? We should have had some kind of special pen, right?
I know, something, inkwell.
I was down there yesterday and she has this, um, incredible video slideshow that she was showing me of just pictures from, that are like from her great, great grandmother. So these, these pictures date back. Oh, yeah, Heather Myers and even back, you know, there's, I was, I, I could have spent, I could have spent days down there, but with, with some sooner or pretty close, I could have spent days down there with her, so. You know, I did, I came out there with some treasure yesterday, but Burton and I were pretty close, so. And she needs that, where did my agenda go? I think it's in there with one of those, and I need that back, please, sorry.
Wonderful, it could be, but here you can have mine, if I can find it.
Oh, you know what, I probably sent it with one of those.
I didn't see it.
At any rate, I'll just give it to the phone.
Here it is.
I got it.
Welcome to town halls, I was kinda bothered happens all the time.
Alright.
Yeah, morning is probably best.
Okay.
Ball and.
Noon, but.
Thank you.
See what it's gonna look like.
And, um, look forward to all of your projects and, and, you know, some really I feel there's gonna be some really cool things happening down there. Yeah, um, so do we, we're excited.
Okay.
Power's moving, power's moving forward.
Alright, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm so excited. I didn't think I'd feel so relieved. It's a lot of work.
Okay, townwide reappraisal discussion and RFP approval.
Okay, so, let's see, where am I? Okay, so, um, at one of our recent meetings, we discussed the need for a reappraisal, the state sent us a reappraisal order. Um, that is based on the COD, which is a coefficient of dispersion, please don't ask me to explain that more. But our percentage, um, to require a reappraisal is a twenty percent standard. We are at twenty point thirty-five, so it's only a point three five above that earmark. Um, we received the order, but what it says is that we can sign that we received it and then we have a hundred and fifty days to um, submit a detailed compliance plan. You can also contest it, so that's why instead of building the RFP for today for reappraisal, I'm asking the board whether you wanna move ahead and just go ahead with the appraisal or do you want to contest it because it's such a small percentage?
I, I hate to even ask because you just said it's gonna be hard to explain what the code version is. But in order to understand whether or not, uh, we're gonna contest it, I think we do need to understand what it is, is that, is that a is that some sort of estimate as to how far off we are from market value?
I believe so.
I don't, Bob, I don't think it's an estimate. I think it's a, I, I think it's based on um, our grand list values versus, um, the properties as they were sold, so if a, if a property that was valued at two hundred thousand, and I, and I may, I may be wrong, but I, I think I'm pretty much on board with this, if a property was sold or, or if we have it on the grand list for say two hundred thousand and it sold for three hundred thousand, um. Right, and I think that's, I'm pretty sure that's how they base it.
Yeah.
Is it's based on the property value of each property that has been sold.
And it's called the, an equalization study, so they do the equalization study on our grand list and they come up with the COD as well as a CLA. This is a letter, but it doesn't describe.
Right, but, but, but being a, but if, if it is, uh, based on actual sales versus what those sales, what the actual, uh, what our grand list says for property value and the difference between those, then it isn't covering every property, it's only covering those that got sold.
Recently, yes.
Right, within a certain timeframe.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know what the timeframe is, I, you know, I don't know.
The reappraisal would be on all properties.
Right.
So if we contested it, we could say it was due to the high cost of, um, people buying homes with unseen because of COVID.
Yes.
So how much does a reappraisal cost the town, do we know?
I don't know, but it's, I would say upwards of a hundred thousand.
It's a lot.
I was gonna say, I think the last time when we did it, and I, it was only what, twenty twenty when we did it?
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago and also the entire state is being forced into a reappraisal, which means we won't.
The state normally does it anyway, but every ten years, anyway.
Get someone till at least probably twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
I would say that there's enough, but, to me, uh, this is my gut, but I can't, I, I, I'm not sure that I'm ready to, to uh, make it, make a firm decision tonight. Uh, but I don't know how, how much time we have, right, it's, don't we have?
We have, um, until, I, I told you in the email, I think December to decide exactly, well, to get them the detailed compliance plan, we have until December to do that, so.
But if we were to contest it, how long?
I, I say we contest it, we owe it to the taxpayers, we shouldn't be punishing the rest of the taxpayers because people were foolish enough to buy some property site unseen for twice the asking price.
And I think.
I agree with that, I agree with Brian, that this is, uh, we need to protect our taxpayers and there were so many a- anomalies and things that that aren't going to happen again, that occurred, well, you would assume, you certainly hope they aren't gonna happen again. Uh, that occurred in the last couple of years that I think we need to, uh.
And the market's already starting to slow down. It is, and our property values are gonna start to equalize here in the next year or so.
They've already come down, you've had multiple properties that have lowered their sales price because they can't sell multiple properties and that's happening because of an increase in interest rates.
And being that we're only point three, three over.
But.
The minimum.
That's what I was wondering, if that's an accurate number, because last, thought the last time I talked to Ellen, but maybe I'm thinking, it's been a while.
That's, that's, that's the number, they come from the state.
Right, I thought, I asked Ellen how close we were, I thought we were just around eighteen. But.
I don't know.
Been a while ago.
This comes from Wendy.
Right.
In the assessor's office, and she feels as though we should probably contest it also because it is such a small and there was all those anomalies of purchasing, went at way higher costs and all that, people were buying things unseen, not even looking.
I think we don't have enough information.
Right.
Actually, to, to.
Make a decision tonight.
Make a decision tonight anyways on this, I think, I think we're all leaning towards the contest it.
Yes.
Anyway, I'd like to bring this back, um, in September. Gives us enough time, air out of, of. I don't like to table things, but I don't think we have enough information.
Sign this before that, though, this is just acknowledging that you received the order.
And we do have a hand up.
Do we have a problem, does anybody have a problem with signing or somebody signing this that we received this?
No, if you need a motion, I make a motion, we authorize the chair to sign it. Sign the acknowledgement.
And this is just an acknowledgement that we have, um, from the state received the municipal response to reappraisal order.
Bob, what were you trying to say?
Uh, just we have a hand up.
Yeah, I don't know if this is public comment, so this is board decision.
So, Angie, aye.
We have a motion on the floor in a second, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye.
And this was just to acknowledge that.
We received.
That we did receive the notification.
Yep. You want me to bring it back in September?
Yeah, maybe in September, I know we're already have some stuff on the twenty-fourth, so I don't wanna overload on, and this isn't something that's probably critically important to do on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay. And, and I hate to table things, it's just, I don't wanna overload you guys on the twenty-fourth, I'm thinking of everyone, Angie. Okay, RFP updated policy.
Um, so I sent this all to you earlier, it's just basically a couple of changes on our purchasing policy to change, um, authorized purchasing agents, which to add me and Hannah and take off a couple of other people that are no longer here. And then you all voted to add in the if purchasing equipment, it has to be, the payment has to be made within thirty days, so that's basically it, it's the same policy we've had for about five years or more now.
Make a motion to accept the new policy as written.
So moved, or second, excuse me, it's been a long day.
You guys are all going to sign these, you could have kept it.
Oh, sorry.
Any more discussion on this, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Back to you, and then we'll go this way. Okay, animal ordinance, animal control ordinance discussion.
Robert, I'll have to stop in.
That's you, big guy?
So, um, so the ordinance, we've been working on it for quite some time. Um, all that was left to do is to match the definitions a little bit more to statute. Um, I reached out to Bob and Brian, cause I'm just feeling a little overwhelmed with it, cause when I look at it, I like the language I used, so I thought it'd be easier if they um, helped me edit those, uh, because they are our experts for animal control. And then once those are updated, I don't know if I had a chance to look at it or not. I'll send it back to the lawyer for final and then bring it back to the twenty-fourth meeting, August twenty-fourth, to have you guys sign it and start the ordinance process. But, like I said, those definitions are still hanging out there.
Um, so I, I, uh, I did go through the, uh, ordinance and I did compare it to the model policy and it's, it is pretty close. It's just a completely different format, um, however, what I can, what I can commit to is, uh, um, and unfortunately, I didn't have time this week. But, uh, uh, by tomorrow, I can send out, uh, take the draft, update the, uh, the, um, make updates to the, uh, definitions uh, where I see they're necessary, and then I'll send that back to you. Uh, I'll try to highlight what I've changed, cause I, I know you specifically asked that.
I know, that, yeah, the format is really tricky when you do the review and you track the changes on Microsoft, it makes it so I can't like get rid of that for some reason, I don't know, maybe I'm not doing it right, but, yeah, it's easier if you just highlight what changes.
Dredge my hammock in school. Um, I would like to also add, I know it's a pain adding to this.
But it's easier now than after it goes.
I would like to have a definitive finding system in place in the policy as well. So if we have repeat offenders on loose dogs constantly running around. I have a definitive system, right, just go through, oh, this is the third offense, this is this much amount of money, this is that. Um, unlicensed dogs, we already know the drill on that one, but there's a lot of circumstances where I'm dealing with repeat offenses over and over and over again, and the only thing our current policy says is twenty-five dollars to.
Right, so that the new policy, I think, gives you a first offense, second offense, and we as a board have to decide what those are, and I don't think we have yet.
No.
And do our tickets go through the juror judicial system?
Yes.
They do, so like if they're offended, like numerous times.
Yeah, it goes across their life.
And the, the structure I use is, I give everybody a lecture the first time, if as long as it's not a nonviolent aggressive situation. Happens again, they get, well, they get a written warning and they have a written acknowledgement that to sign off on too. Which has the correctional actions to be taken place and dates on when it'd be fixed by. And then we start moving to tickets, and most situations are like loose dogs, is, I start off at twenty-five dollars a dog. Happens again, doubles, happens again, doubles, happens again, doubles, I'm allowed to do up to a five hundred dollar ticket if I want to. Um, but the town, the select board can bump that up to eight hundred dollars if you really wanted to, it has to be in place in the policy. According to VLCT, big bu- big book of wolf.
So I think the, I, I believe the fines have to match what's in the policy, so we as the select board will select what those fines are. Um, and then, uh, and, and on an incremented basis. And then the VLCT and the state gives us, gives us a, uh, limits on what, on what we can and can't do, right? We, we can't, can't make it ten thousand dollars.
I think what he stated, because he checked with VLCT, is the maximum the town can do is eight hundred. And we could take and put a line in there, it starts at twenty-five dollars first offense after the warnings or whatever. And.
And the template actually.
Maximum of eight hundred dollars.
What do you?
Right, but the, the template actually lays it all out, right? Right, but the, the template actually lays it all out, right? The, the template, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tara, and, and I do need to correct one thing. Um, I don't consider myself an expert, so.
I'm just thinking the language you just used was very simple, you know?
That's the way the entire policy needs to be.
You know, double, bing, bing, bing.
A bunch of legal mumbo jumbo. So when I give it to somebody, it just breaks down nice and simple. This is what you did. This is what's gonna happen. I need something I can literally just hand to people and be like, this is why you, this is happening to you.
And I think that's a very reasonable request and, and I just like that, the way you've explained it. First offense, 25, second, doubles, doubles again.
Yeah, I, I like the way that.
Eight, eight hundred out.
And not just, not just the way you explained it. I also like that you're, you know, first you have the, let them know. Then you, then you give them a verbal warning and then you start with the first offense.
Right, I mean.
And so they get three chances essentially before they cost them any money.
And I also do this on a rolling calendar year too, because I had some offenders, which I've been doing this job for two years, four months roughly. I have a couple of offenders I've been dealing with since day one.
Yeah.
Situations that it's just over and over and over.
That's, that was either my question to you is, so, so if we have you, have you find any animal owners up to the $500 point?
I've come close to one.
Okay.
And do they pay their tickets?
I don't know because it goes to the Department of.
It doesn't.
Where it goes to. But I get their license number when I write out the ticket. So if they don't pay it, they lose their license, so.
Do you do it per animal or per person?
Per animal, per incident. So I have one situation where it's two dogs constantly. And they get hit with a double animal each time.
Okay.
So I, you're, you're operating on the current policy, which I think became effective in 2005, right?
Yes. Yes, and it's very nondescript. And it doesn't address things.
There's a lot of open to interpretation.
Right.
I, that's not what I want. I don't need something that's loaded with loopholes where somebody can go through and say, oh, I didn't do this or this. I want something whack and light. This is chain link now, no room for wiggling. This is how it's gonna be.
Well, I mean, the current policy does spell it out. It's just really low amounts. It's a first offense is a written warning, second offense is a $25 penalty, $15 waiver. Um, with the third offense being a $50. And then subsequent offenses is, uh, plus 100. And, uh, uh, and what else? An impoundment cost, right? Impoundment? Oh, I'm sorry. Subsequent offenses after the third offense is impoundment, plus $100, uh, uh, full penalty. Um, and then, so it, it actually does spell it out. It's just, uh, it's just maybe we wanted to have more meat. I don't know. More teeth.
And, and impoundment includes paying your time also to take care of.
Which I also think is very low.
Right.
Compared to other areas around us.
Well, I just want to make sure that verbiage is in there.
Yeah.
Right, and so the, uh, the new policy does save the verbiage.
So, so I think on it, where I'm leaning on this one. Where I'm leaning on this whole thing is, it sounds to me. It sounds to me, Leonard, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like 95% of the people that you find or whatever, it's a one or a two time fine.
Usually it doesn't even go past written warning.
Okay.
Right.
So, so I think what I'm, where I'm leaning on this is we're not, if, if we increase the fine to the maximum allowed by VLCT to $800 for those repeat offenders, right? We're not hitting very many people. We're hitting very few people in your two and a half years.
Right, yeah.
Right? We're hitting a, a really low number of people, but we're hitting that person who really doesn't care.
Yeah.
Right? It, it's really, it really doesn't care. They're just gonna let their dogs or animals do whatever they're doing.
Yeah.
My theory is hit them. But that's just me because they don't care. But, you know.
Uh, I, I, I agree. That, that makes, that makes sense. And I was kind of speaking out of turn a little bit. Um, I was conflating the model policy. VLCT does have a model policy and it came out in 2021. So as policies go, that's fairly new. Uh, uh, though our policy and the one that we're putting, the, our draft policy, uh, doesn't really have the language around the first, second, and third offense, other than matching what we have in our previous policy. The newer policy, the VLCT model policy does have that language. And it does give us, uh, and it, and it breaks it down by what kind of offense. There's a, a, you know, a, a different, uh, a first offense for, you know, biting a kid. It's gonna be different than a first offense for, you know, your dog getting loose.
Right.
You know, that, so, uh, uh, I, I like the VLCT model policy. One, because it's already been vetted by attorneys and therefore we know we're on pretty solid ground. Um, uh, and we don't have to worry about, about whether or not we're missing anything. So, um, if it's all right, what I'll do is I will take the current policy and I will make it match the VLCT model policy. But then we as a board still have to come back and, and, uh, uh, decide on what those, what those amounts are gonna be. Because the, the model policy does break it down by type of offense and it's different. And we can apply different, uh, uh, different, different amounts for different offenses.
Well, it fit our town format, being a rural town.
Well, there's also other issues I would like added to the, the animal control policy, which I don't know if made it in there. But the, uh, free ranging livestock, trespassing on other people's properties, that needs to be addressed.
That's why I tried to use definitions about domestic animals.
Right.
That covered any animal in town.
Yeah.
That's kept as a pet. Um, but that's what they were saying they didn't really like. So that's why I wasn't sure how to adjust the policy to address what you need addressed.
Yeah, I.
I remember that.
In the policy. I can't go there with a, a policy that says this is about your dog when I'm talking about your 12 chickens jumping all over your neighbor's car.
That's why I brought.
I got no, I got nothing to back me up on when it comes to the policy that we have right now.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have anything about farm animals running loose.
Oh, that's.
But I get called.
We have to be very careful about delving the, uh, our animal control policy into, into livestock. I mean, that, that's a massive expansion of what we're doing.
Yeah, no, I have, I don't.
Really fast.
I just think.
Should I not be answering those kind of calls on?
They have it under control.
Yeah. That'd be a gay mordern than that should be answering that call.
That's what I was, that's what I would think. I would think that's, that falls under different.
Because I've taken calls for loose horses. I've went and kept catching the horses and brought them back to their owners. I've got calls for cows breaking out through the fence and running down the road. I've herded them back and brought them back. I've got calls for chickens trespassing on people's properties, jumping on their cars. We all remember the racetrack incident.
Yep.
With the sheep.
Right.
I, I, my job covers more than just dogs, cats.
Right.
Now, stuff like horses getting out and cows getting out, that's always occurred up here and it's never been part of our policy. I think that should be out of scope for our animal control officer. That should be more around, uh.
So who should Leonard field those calls to? Because he's gonna, he's gonna still get.
I, I gotta ask what we did in the past because my entire life in townal has been cows out. When I talk about a traffic jam, because I can't get through, I can't get through Mount Anthony Road because the cows are, uh.
I honestly, I honestly don't think that, that horses and, um, I don't think that this is a horse and a cow sort of a conversation. I think, I think this is a free range chicken.
Yes.
Invasion on, um.
It's gotta cover every feathered animal that is possible in the.
Free ranged animal, not just.
I mean, a free ranged animal, when you, when, if, if, if you have free ranged animals, and correct me if I'm wrong. It's not free range on everyone's property. It's free range on your own property.
It states their own property.
Private.
There is boundaries.
I mean, when, when a neighbor's.
Could that just be handled through a zoning by law change?
Oh, yeah, sure. No. No one can.
Yes, it can. You're my man, chicken man.
Oh, man. I, I, I think we need to look into that where it needs to go. But I, I do think that that's something that unfortunately has become more commonplace. I mean, listen, listen, 50 years ago, when somebody's chickens got over on somebody else's property, there's a barbecue.
Yeah.
Right? You don't do that anymore. Right? I mean, that took care of.
I mean, we had a bunch of cows come over on, in our backyard. We looked up the tag, got ahold of one of the farmers in town, said, hey, we got this tag number, you know, what belongs to.
And I don't wanna toot my old horn or anything, but in the short time I've been doing this job, these are the kind of calls that I've been doing all along. So if we all of a sudden stop, people are gonna be very upset that I'm not going out and going after horses on the highway or a cow in the road. So.
And you've been trying to handle those. Are you coordinating with like VSP, just giving them a heads up? Like, how do you handle it?
I go and do it.
You go, go try to return it?
So let me ask you this, Leonard. Uh, so, so you go answer a cow, o- o- or, or multiple cows out. I mean, generally speaking, you know, like I'm a farmer, generally speaking, that's kind of a one time thing. Or maybe a couple of times and then the farmer fixes your fence because they don't, they don't want to lose their livestock.
Yeah.
Same thing with the horse.
Yeah.
Right? It's a one, that's a one time response for the most part, I'm sure.
That one was double, but.
That's kind of just a good neighbor response.
Look at, you know. Excuse me, uh, you know, we've had cows get out and you think you fix the fence and there's another wholesome one you haven't seen. Okay, don't get me wrong. And any farmer can do that, or, or a person who has a hobby farmer, but their animals can get out, horses or, or cows or whatever. The chicken thing is the one that gets me, or the geese where, uh, you know what? Not everybody likes chickens. Not, not everybody likes geese. And I think that's where we need to really kind of address that stuff. I mean, the livestock. I mean, if you have, if somebody has a horse that's getting out on somebody else's property all the time, that's different. But if it's just out in the road, I think that's a one timer. Cows, cows are the same too. Sheep, same, you know, kind of the same thing. People generally try to keep their pigs and sheep.
Yeah, nobody wants to lose a cow or a horse. Those are expensive. It costs a lot of money.
The, the ordinance is kind of generalized to say, any domesticated animal of yours should remain on your own property. It doesn't necessarily have to mean cow or horse. It can just include everything is I think what I was going.
And that was kind of where I was going with the, what I didn't like about some of the initial definitions. It actually defined, uh, farm animals as domestic pets. And I, we, we.
Defined what is a domestic pet?
Uh, farm animals as domestic pets.
Some people do have domestic pets.
I got four of them.
As.
Yeah, but if you classify them as, as pets though, then you run into the animal cruelty charge when it comes time to slaughter.
Well, no, I get what you're saying. But I think if we just put in the policy, any free range.
Don't even open that one.
Feathered animal has to say free range in your own yard.
I was gonna fix it, he said, so you tell him how to.
If I'm fixing it, I'm going with the VLCT policy that doesn't.
That one's 40, 25, I'm.
Does VLCT have a separate policy for farm animals?
I don't know. I guess.
I, I, I think, I think that's gonna, I think I'll just do a little research, Bob, and come back on that one.
And see if the VLCT has a separate policy for farm animals. Like, how's the state address it?
I, I'm almost certain that that's gonna be covered by Vermont statute and not, not a, uh, uh, you know, a, a farm policy.
Well, that's what I would think would be under the right to farm.
Or, you know, that's what, that's what I was thinking also. Um, I, 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 we really need to keep animal control with, uh, our animal control ordinance, in my opinion, our animal control ordinance to, to, to really be around pets. And we need to get out of the horse and cow business. I mean, we just, we just have to. Uh, that's, I don't think it's appropriate that people are calling you, Leonard, about cows that are out. I think that that's more of a call around and find the farm. And most of us know whose, whose farms has cows, right?
Yep. I mean, you're not gonna break my heart taking calls away from me, especially those kind, but people are, they do expect me to do that kind of stuff because I have been doing it all along, so.
Your response should be call your neighbor.
Yeah, I think the appropriate response is that's outside of the scope of, uh, of, of, of my authority as animal control officer.
Okay.
Oh, that's my, that's my recommendation. I mean, I'm just one of five here.
Do a little bit of research on it and see where it goes and then we can make a decision on that. Right now, I think, I don't think we can.
Yeah.
And I can't, I'm not comfortable making a decision without that right now. See what the VLCT comes up with, if there's anything, you know, you know, anywhere on a model policy that.
I'm almost certain there is not a model policy to cover the horses and cows. I, I'm almost certain. In fact, I'm almost certain there's not gonna be a model policy to cover free range chickens.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not doubting that, but I, I'm, I'm not comfortable because honestly, right now, um, I'm not so sure about the cows and the horses, but the chicken problem kind of does fall under a.
I know in Bennington, you have to keep them in your own yard, period, or else the police come knocking on your door because it's happened to my daughter numerous times.
Right.
So it's probably worth a question on, uh, uh, of, to Bennington, of what policy does that fall under?
Right.
Cause she.
I think Bennington just does it under their zoning bylaws. I'm not saying that is a dig against you, Mike. I'm just saying, I'm pretty sure that's how Bennington just handles theirs. Like, I don't think they created a separate set of laws.
No, I don't know. I mean, I know, I know some places in townal, some housing developments don't allow certain, certain types of animals in, you know, certain areas.
Yep.
You know?
And that's, and that's fine. That's a.
That's an A D and all that kind of stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Private businesses with their private, uh, with their own policy, that's, that's up to them.
Right.
Well, we're, yeah, this would be town policy.
HOAs.
Okay, looks like our table in there.
Oh, man, I hate table and shit too.
I know. I'm really hoping we can get a better answer on that.
Bob can fix it and.
I'd like to see this one, um.
Is there any way to fast track this? So we can get it to the lawyer and then get it to the town, get it voted on, like before the year's over?
Oh, before the year's over, yeah.
Well, we've been sitting on this.
Bob, can you, can you do the research on this and bring it back to 24th?
So I, um, I, I doubt I'm gonna have time to do the research on cows, horses and chickens. Um, I think the, uh, the question is how does pound, how does Bennington handle, handle the chickens? And that's the only point of contention, right? I think we're all in agreement that we probably shouldn't be, be having Leonard deal with horses and cows or any other farm animals. It comes down to chickens because, because people, uh, uh, people tend to have those birds, uh, in, in more populated areas where you really need a farm to have a horse. You really need the resources to have a horse or a cow. So, uh, so the only thing I'm gonna be looking at is, uh, is trying to make sure that this policy matches the VLCT policy that's already been vetted by attorneys. If we want to include chickens in it, then somebody's gonna have to do some research as to how Bennington handles it or how towns that handle this, uh, with a policy and how they handle it. Now, we.
I, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to say that at this, uh, at this point, until we come up with a new policy, continue to handle the horses and cows and chickens.
Yeah.
The way you've been doing it. But once we come up with a new policy, if it doesn't have that in there, then at that point, I would say when someone calls you about a, our animal control officer, about a horse or a cow or a chicken, it's not your problem.
Well, hang on, Mike. I, I'm gonna disagree a little bit because we do have a current policy. We have the policy from 2005 and it doesn't give any authority over chickens and, I mean, over cows or horses. I think we can say now that that's out of scope.
Okay, no, that's fine too. I just, I just didn't want to change because he's been doing, he's been doing it right along. I didn't want to change it until we had a new policy in place, I guess is where I was going. But, but I, you know, I mean, we can do it now if that's what the board wants. If that's what the board decides, I mean, I, I agree with, you know, okay, if we're not gonna have it in our policy and we're not gonna address it, then our animal control officer doesn't do it. I'm fine with that part of it. I just didn't want to change it now without having that new policy in place. I didn't, you know.
Well, I mean, the policy doesn't have it. And I don't think before Leonard, uh, uh, and it's just because Leonard's a nice guy. Before we had Leonard, I don't think any, I don't think our, our animal control officer would ever have, have, have answered a call for a cow or even got a call for a cow or, or a horse.
He doesn't answer one for his. Good one, not me. I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, if the board, if that's what the board decides right now, that we, at this, at this time, if that's what you guys wanted to decide on, that we no longer respond to cows, horses, or chickens, because we don't have a policy on it, I'm.
Better throw pigs in there too.
And sheep?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would say, I would just call it livestock. I mean, it.
Well, yeah, but you gotta go follow them livestock, right? Because chickens aren't livestock technically.
No, they're fowl.
They're fowl.
Correct.
So, yeah, I would say you gotta go follow them livestock.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Bob, you're gonna fix the policy to match VLCT model. But you still want someone to research the chicken piece?
Me as a board, well, I'm not saying that. Um, that's not what, what I'm hearing from the board is that the board wants to handle the chicken piece, the fowl. And if that's true, then, then we're gonna have to figure out how that gets handled by other towns and what legal authority we have. It is not covered by the VLCT's model policy, which has been vetted by attorneys. So, so we're kind of delving into something that, that, uh, at least by the VLCT model policy is out of scope for the animal control officer.
I'll, I'll reach out to Tom or Bennington and ask them what their free-range policy is. Just to get some ideas.
Yeah, you don't need it on your plate.
Well, is the board deciding, I guess that's where I'm confused, because Bob said, are you guys deciding you want to address that in the policy? Because if you don't wanna address it in the policy, then you don't have to contact Bennington.
I, I just think a little information and we can decide that, but I, obviously, we're getting complaints.
It's continuing to be.
Leonard getting complaints on these items, so.
Thing that we have to kinda look into. It's our, it's our responsibility to taxpayers.
I just pulled up Bennington's ordinances and under care and control of animals, it makes no mention of.
Free range?
Of chickens.
So that means that Bennington, if, if the information we have, that means Bennington is handling it, but they're not handling it under this ordinance.
Yeah, they're not doing it under an ordinance.
Right, so, so they're handling it some other way. What I can commit to is getting an updated policy back to you, Tara, uh, either today or tomorrow. I can commit to that, that matches, or at least very closely aligns with the VLCT model policy. I'm comfortable with the model policy, the, because again, it's already been vetted by attorneys.
I think we bring the, I think we bring this back on the twenty-fourth. We bring this back on the twenty-fourth, um, for discussion. And then we, we can move forward on this with our animal, animal control portion of it. And I think that the chickens and livestock is gonna take a little more research and we can do an addendum at a later date for chickens and, and.
Unless I, if I get enough information by next, because I'll contact Chasbury.
I'm not hearing, yeah, I, you know, I'd like to have a couple of different places.
That's what I'm thinking. Chasbury, more rural like we are, so that's where.
Arlington, Chasbury, you know.
Yeah.
Good thing.
Some neighbors.
Does that sound like a, does that sound like a prayer plan? At least we can get an animal control ordinance.
Uh, as long as it gets the policy off the back burner.
Started on the twenty-fourth of August and we can say, yes, this is what we're gonna do for dogs and cats and whatever else. Parakeets or.
I've had a parrot call.
I'm sure you have.
I'm not even joking.
I know, yeah, I hold a better response. I saw it.
He's actually had a bat fight call. You would not believe what this poor guy gets called.
It'd be a python and a.
So, uh, I, I think we'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-fourth and have it at least of, of model policy. And then we can do addendums at that point if we need to moving forward. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Sorry, Angie.
You're fine.
Uh, public comment? Do we have any public comments tonight, Hannah? Okay.
Oh, board, um, Jim Coase is calling North Mason Hill Road. I just wanna backtrack up to the appraisal. And I, I, first of all, I commend you that you didn't make a decision tonight, just because it's a small percentage, but I really, really, really hope that, um, you might invite Nemrick, who is now our professional appraisal, um, person, to really come in and explain. There are two ways that the, um, state is looking at the numbers. Um, one of them, I was surprised at, it's the, um, and I'm sure, um, and I, I'm sorry, lost my track there, but I'm sure there's different ways that they are doing the appraisals. And it's not totally based on the sales. It's, that's just a measurement to bring it out, but your appraisal is really an important aspect for everyone in town, because it affects not only what we're paying the town, but the major portion of our taxes is based on school taxes. And that is a good measurement. Um, Brian may have said that there was a last appraisal in two thousand and twenty. I don't think it's been, that was only two thousand and twenty. I think it's been, it's close to ten or fifteen years. Uh, I may be wrong, but I, I personally think it's something that really needs to be done, just to make sure that there's um, really good fairness in our appraisal and how everyone is being measured as a town. Um, the last time any, some of these have been appraised, we had the, um, local appraisers that, um, hopefully did it great. They, the heartbeat, the appraisal is the heartbeat of how this town really collects its money and spends its money and everything. So to me, it's a very, 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 very important aspect that you can't just, um, put aside. I know there was one comment that Bob, when it first came up, um, that we needed one. There was an expression that maybe people could just do their voluntary appraisal if they want to, if no one else wants to. But in any case, um, I'd really like to see Nemrick come in um, and explain the whole thing of how an appraisal really is done before you decide that you wanna contest it. Thank you very much.
I don't recall saying anything about a voluntary appraisal.
Neither do I.
Neither do I.
Um, any more public comment here?
So, you know, we can have Jacob come in from Nemrick.
Right, um, I think, I think having Nemrick come in and explain, I think is a good idea. I, you know, I think we can schedule him in September, I'm sure, give him, you know, you know, a month's notice or something like that. I think Jake would be fine coming in.
Yep.
And Wendy, I'm sure both of them would come in.
Yep.
Working it. So we'll reach out. It's a good idea. Um, any more public comment here? Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive for animal control.
Second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye. Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Come out of executive for animal control.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, the results of our executive for animal control. Um, we will be scheduling, um, um, a couple of vicious dog hearings in the very near future. Um, we just have to find out, um, a couple of the legalities of it and then, um, those will be scheduled in the future for some dog incidents that we've had in the past, uh, four or three weeks. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive for illegal.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Entertained a motion to come out of executive for legal.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye.
So, I make a motion, the select board authorized Chairman Mike Gardner to sign the Third Amendment to the voice purchase and sales agreement to authorize payment and requisite deposit, should it be necessary to extend the sale to September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do we wanna, uh, do we wanna make it clear just that, uh, uh, this is be, because we may not be able to make the eighteenth? And if we make the eighteenth, then this extra, then this increase is not necessary.
That's true.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Make sure the public gets that, that's all.
Yep.
That's a contingency on.
This is just a contingency plan in case we can't close on the eighteen.
Correct.
Any more discussion? Clarification? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Um, executive for personnel.
So moved.
Let's make this one quick.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Executive.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, is there any public comment here? Nobody's in? Oh, finally, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's no discussion, Angie.
All in favor, Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, everyone, for attending.